And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening. I'll call this meeting in the West Spring City Council to order roll call.
Kristi?
Here.
Crowder?
Here.
Knightmeier?
Here.
Please?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
Need to perfect approve the agenda on our new business. I'm number eight. We're gonna scratch that. We did not receive any bids. Contractors were confused about turning in bids today, so we'll take that off, even though Kelly had to add it Monday.
Motion to approve is amended.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowder?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Kristi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through 10, which are amendments from regular city council meeting on June 17th, 2020. Approve payment to Johnson Hy-Vee for Iowa Law Enforcement Academy meals. Approve payment to Iowa Law Enforcement Academy for officer training. Approve payment to Shield Technology for software support. Approve payment to Skelly Tree Service. Approve payment to Joint Safety Committee for employee safety training. Approve payment to the Iowa League of Cities for the annual dues. Approve payment to Brockway Company for maintenance. Approve the clerk monthly financial report for May 2020. And approve claims list as presented the amount of $201,924.88. Any discussion?
I just have one. There's, we're missing a claim for Skelly's for $750. I see the one for $1,700, but it's in the claims list, but I don't see it up here with the other one.
If it's less than $1,000, it doesn't go separately on the sinning duty, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, there is one for $1,700 and another one for $750.
Well, if it's over $1,000, it goes on the sinning duty. If it's under $1,000, it doesn't have to go to the sinning duty.
I just want to make sure that we're gonna pay him. Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Kristi?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Staff reports. Dan, I have a couple things. Like the mayor said, we didn't get any quotes for that Agency Street Crossing project. And when the engineer followed up, one company said, oh crap, was that today? And they followed up with a couple others. And there was some confusion, so we're gonna re-quote that at some point. They're gonna reach out to a few more, few more companies and try to get some more interest in it. The ones they sent it to expressed interest when she sent it out, but for some reason, they lost interest in the meantime and got confused or whatever, so you'll see that come up again. Secondly, next, next meeting, you'll have an agenda item to approve the grant administration by regional planning for our SRF loan for the South Lift Station. We did that for this, for the sewer plant project and the water tower project. On that grant applicant, or on their contract, it says a limit of $30,000. It shouldn't be anywhere near that, but they always put every, they put that on the sewer plant one, that was $10 million, and they put it on this one, that's $900,000, the same number. But it's, it's an hourly, it's an hourly rate, and Leslie and I've talked, and if we limit the number of draws we send to them, that's less work for them and we can save money that way. So don't freak out with sticker shock when you see that $30,000. It's probably not anywhere near what it's gonna be.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Do I have anything for Dan? Mike?
To start with, Chase Williams and Joel Schneiden finished both their wastewater and their water treatment classes to train them a little bit before they do their testing and with the COVID. Right now, they're saying September before they can go take their tests for their grade one and two in the sewer department and water department and get that. One other thing, we've done a lot of work in the park over at Pat Klein mainly. There was a broken pole. If you guys noticed that, it has been ordered, and as soon as it comes in, Bazines will be here to rewire it and put the pole back up by the main shelter house. Not sure how it got broke. And this week, we came into a problematic gear and agency that was unforeseen. It kinda happened with the pods and the traffic control. When the trail was designed and put in, that intersection was run by cameras. So no one was aware that those pods that activate the lights were in the concrete. And when the traffic controller got ran over and the parts got here, the trail was not started or marked. Nobody knew where the sidewalk was gonna go over the street. So they went off the original stop block and set the pods, and they're epoxied in, so it's like you can't remove them. When they're, when they're no good, or you gotta replace them to move them is what's, what's happened. So on the turn in the straight lane both, it means we got four pods sitting on the opposite side of the trail than where you stop with your car. So your cars aren't picking up the sensor to change the lights properly, so it's kind of a unforeseen thing that nobody, it, you know, I mean, it was designed with the cameras, and now we switched to pods, and then the trail started and the trail's done, so. Bazines, I got a quote late this afternoon. It was, it's gonna be $4,800 to replace four pods and reprogram the pods and core drill them and get them into the concrete to get it right, so. That's all I got.
Do I have anything for Mike?
Yeah, I do. Um, Mike, I want you to congratulate the guys, because I think they did an awesome job in cleaning up Pat Klein Park. It was looking a little shady, and not with the trees. The other thing, I've, I've been out to Denver, I've been to other areas, and they have what's called poop, poop, poop holes or something.
Dog waste.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good. Anyway, we have a lot of people walking through the park with their dogs, and they walk throughout the community. Now, some people aren't, aren't good pet owners like I am, that I carry my little purse with the bags to collect their poop. And, you know, no matter how many times you put them outside to go potty, no matter where you go, someone's gonna take a poop. And I thought it would be nice if we could start in Pat Klein Park, to put up on each end of the park, a pole that has the, the bags for you to, to collect the excrement. And then I think underneath, there's like a basket to put the, the bags in. And I'd like to start there, because I see a lot of people going through the park with their dogs. And, you know, you could be caught off guard not having a bag.
Do you want to just go with Pat Klein? Because I know that's been an issue at the ballfields too. Inevitably, the gates get left open, and I've just ordered new signs because the pick-up after your pet, it is the law. Signs have been broke off the posts in all the parks. So I'm gonna replace them, but I know that's been an issue. It's brought up to me too, of people just turning their dog loose in the ballfield, and I'm gonna put the signs back up, but there are people that go over there and walk it too, unless you just want to start with one park and see what, what kind of results we get with it.
I don't know. I think it'd be good to have them scattered throughout the city, like up by the schools, because, you know, you, you all hither and yon. And, but we can start with that park and maybe Community Park. I don't know how much traffic lures gets, because I don't go down there that often. Stella's legs don't go that far, but I thought it would be good. If we, if we have a sign that says it's up to you to collect the waste, and if by accident they have a poop, you're gonna run home and get a bag, come back. I would, because I live close, but not, nobody else. But I thought it would be a good thing to help keep, keep our parks clean. And then the other thing that, with the COVID, thank God for COVID. We wouldn't have anything else to discuss. I know at one time, we did have the bathroom opened and people signed a key to get in there and use the restroom. Because if you have a picnic or anything over there, and there's some graduation parties, there's no place to wash your hands or utensils. I know we talked about the bathhouse once before about redoing it, but I think that, I think for people that want to use our facilities, and we encourage them to use it, that if we redo the bathroom and solid gold stainless steel or whatever appliances you gotta put in there, that nobody rips them off the wall, I think it would, it would be an asset to people, and then they can come in, we can let them know to come in again and put a deposit down and get the key for the use of the bathroom. I don't know, it's.
I'll research that again and pull up what the, what the current prices are for just one toilet and one sink in each side. That would be enough if you did it that way. They're fairly expensive, but, because they're stainless steel and they're bolted through the wall, they're basically what you put in a jail. They're pretty indestructible. So I'll, I'll look up that price and report back on that.
Okay.
We did talk a little bit about fall cleanup too. Do you want to mention fall cleanup at all?
Yeah, what we, it was the seventh?
October 7th.
October 7th is what we put on the calendar that we're gonna put out, and it seems like we didn't get spring cleanup. We're gonna do it in the fall.
Okay, and I'd just like to thank Mike and your guys too for the park. It looks great. Really looks good.
I'll put my hat in the ring on the, on the dog waste idea as well. I think that's a good idea to have those through the city. I think one extra place, if there's a place out at the mall, maybe we could coordinate with them. I think that's another area. See, walking around the new road out there. And I know I walk that a lot and see a lot of dog waste as well, so I think that'd be a good spot.
Yeah, I think those are a great idea.
Okay.
Glad you came, Mike. Thank you.
Anything else for the Republic works? David, Police Department, what's going on?
Chief Logan just wanted to reiterate that Officer Mettler will be going up to the academy on Monday, so that's about it.
Anything for the Police Department from anybody?
Any burglaries or car break-ins or any areas of town we probably need to look at?
I believe burglary wise, we haven't had anything, which is fairly unusual. We usually get hit in the summer and in the winter time, but we really haven't had much of that, so we had to do a lot of, I guess, by-the-book training with our new guys as to how to handle that. They're gonna be with another senior officer on their shift, so when it does happen, they'll be able to walk them through it as to how to handle it, but as of right now, no.
Oh, I can go out about, no, I'm just kidding. And I, I guess I'd like to talk to you and Jesse about, you know, when school starts, if we can't get the Neighborhood Watch program incentivized again. Because I think with everything going on in, in our neighborhood and what crosses over, I think it'd be wise to reinvent the wheel and get it going.
Yeah, that would be nice to get everybody back going as strong as it used to be.
Thank you.
I think Jesse said this morning he's gonna have a couple of guys come in early on Saturday night for, out at the SEC for the fireworks.
I believe so, yes, for, for fireworks.
We'll have that, and we do wanna, you know, it won't be, you won't get into the county news till next week, but if the Hawkeye reporter or any reporters watching this, you know, they can't make it out to the meetings anymore. We do not want people to park on the, on 406, you know, on the road or off, off the road. We want them to utilize the parking lots that are available all around where the fireworks are gonna be shot off at, you know. Out there, you're gonna have a pretty good views from the old Menards Parking Lot, the SEC Parking Lot, the Farm King Parking Lot, the Mall Parking Lot. Probably across the street, none of those businesses will be open, the, the bank and, you know, what all else is, is in there. I can't name them all. The hospital parking lot, so all those people have been contacted and, and would let them know that the fireworks will be shot off there, so. Anybody have anything for David, Police Department? Sean?
On, excuse me, on the fireside engine three was an easy fix, electrical issue, which is kind of typical of the, those vehicles from our manufacturer. But it was a very easy fix, so it was only out of service a brief period of time. With regards to fireworks, I did have a call last week from the Hawkeye who was asking questions. I answered some of his questions. I also reiterated the stay off 406, stay off 8, Highway 34. Offered up some suggestions on good parking spots to catch them. There's plenty out there. I mean, it's gonna be a great viewing area. We will have our brush truck out there just as standard precaution. We've done that in the past for the fair. And I've been kind of watching the call logs as far as fireworks incidents in town. And I'm very proud of our citizens in that they're being respectful, or maybe they're just not calling in when they're getting them. But we've had very few reported incidents of fireworks in town. I did make a post on our fire department Facebook page, just reminding people of our city ordinance, which is chapter 32. That you have to be 150 feet away from an occupied structure. No firing them off in residential areas unless you are that far away. Just asking everyone to be safe with this upcoming weekend. I also, we've had several questions on the pancake breakfast. Unfortunately, with the COVID restrictions, we will not be having pancake breakfast on July 4th. However, after discussing it with my officers on the department, we're looking at doing it during Fire Prevention Week, which is October 4th through October 10th. So we will have pancake breakfast just later in the fall. On the building side, working on some nuisances. I did have several that I went around and made note of. A lot of those have actually been addressed already. A few just are gonna need a little bit more prodding. There's another one that we had an email discussion today about. I have to call the city attorney with regards to another issue on another property that we have a contract with that individual. Just give an update with him on that contract, and I will discuss it with him regarding that issue, and we'll see where we can get that moving forward on. I did spend some time at the school today, helping them. They're trying to implement some COVID measures for when they open that back up here at the beginning of August. And we've got, it sounds like they got a pretty good plan in motion, and they asked me with regards to building and fire inspection wise, and I gave them a green light to get moving on their projects, so.
They had to have a plan in by, to the state by today, didn't they?
Yeah.
Do they have anything for Sean? Okay. Kelly, you got anything going on? Leslie?
So I've had a new budget here. You got money?
Got money to spend again, right? Kathy, you got anything going on?
Yeah, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on June 24th. They appointed a new chairman, Jim Rouse. The chairman had resigned, and Steve Swafford is the new chairman. Blake Ruther remains as the vice chairman. Bob Christie was appointed to represent the board at the Board of Adjustment. They approved the partial final plat for Wildlife's Lake Subdivision, also approved preliminary plat for the Celtic Crossing subdivision, and approved the preliminary plat, et cetera, with some changes for Penn's Landing subdivision. They are, set a public hearing date to rezone that land that was annexed into the city from agricultural to R2. That will be August 12th. And they discussed updating the comprehensive plan. So that's my report on that meeting, and that's it.
Thank you. Andy?
If you'll indulge me just a minute, I want to thank a couple sponsors for the Fourth of July celebration. Help us pay for the fireworks this year. Just a quick list. Big River Resources, Wilbert's Vault, Pepsi, Remax, Lunning Chapel, Schottenkirk, Municipal Supply, KCP, KPI Concepts, Two Rivers Bank and Trust, Interstate Power and Light, which I believe is Alliant, Snyder and Associates, COBO, F and M Bank and Trust, Dave Bazine Electric, Ideal Ready Mix, and Anderson Service Center. And then we just got two in today from Casey's General Store and French Reniker Associates. So thank you very much for your support. If you're out there listening to this, please thank those people if you see them.
Thank you. Josh? Reese? Al?
I'm good.
Okay.
I got an email, a text message I forgot to note. We had applied through Alliant for a grant, a community grant, and we listed it under safety. We received notice that we received a $1,000 grant from Alliant Energy that is gonna be used. We specified to use it towards our Stop the Bleed campaign that we're doing to put the Stop the Bleed kits in the school. So I want to thank Alliant Energy for their generous donation.
Did you get the grant already? Usually Nancy shows up with a check.
We received the notice today, so.
Yeah, I think maybe the big check thing is COVIDed out for right now. Nancy's probably in her basement, locked down in her basement.
I'd be happy with a little check.
Alrighty. Oh, let's see. Anyone wishing to address the council that are on matters that we don't have on the agenda tonight? Their citizens' inquiries. We'll go to old business, which is item number one is to consider a resolution accepting the 2018 wastewater treatment plant project and releasing retainage money to Leander Construction in the amount of $93,520.28. And Mr. Ashbury is here, if you guys have any questions on that, with, I know you tabled it from the last one, to see what, about the liens. I think there's still something like $48 or $4900. That's, that's the actual price that's.
Smith &amp; Lovett, and we did get a whole harmless agreement.
Why don't you get up and use the microphone so people can hear you?
Yeah.
We have a whole harmless agreement in place. The attorney accepted it. We had to do a little modification for the attorney, and we did that. It was just for some damage that their equipment did when we first installed it at the pump station. They agreed to repair their portion, but not pull the pump and pull the, the piece of existing equipment that got damaged. So we had to step in, and we hired Mississippi Pump that the city uses, and gave them every opportunity to do it themselves, and they wouldn't do it. So anyway, that, that had to be done to keep that pump station in place, and it wasn't a warranty item because the pump, or the pump motor had not been accepted yet. So we didn't consider it a warranty item, neither did the city. So we had to, they had to come back and pull the pump, Mississippi Pump did, pull the pump, and then the stand and such underneath it that got damaged. Smith &amp; Lovett repaired and replaced those portions, but there was the expense of pulling the pump. And we wrote them a deductive change order, and, you know, that doesn't mean they have to accept it, but that's kind of where we're at on it. Don't feel that we should have to pay them for work that they were responsible for, or damage that they were responsible for, so. And the city didn't either. I mean, they weren't, you know, they weren't happy. At that time, Randy and Rod weren't happy with, with Smith &amp; Lovett as far as they're stepping up and taking, taking charge of that situation, so. I, is there, I mean, the whole harmless agreement's acceptable to the attorney. I think at the last meeting, someone suggested we just wait to get that final waiver.
I included the email chain with the attorney, and you can see that in your packet, so what, what our city attorney had to say. He said he'd rather have the actual lien waiver, but he thought that this was acceptable if, even if they did file a lien on it, we're not gonna sell the sewer plant anytime soon, so there's probably not any thing holding the city up, but.
This was a 2018.
Also said in my memo that you could approve a lesser payment and leave that, leave, say, $5,000 in retainage to cover that, if you feel more comfortable doing that. That's entirely up to council what you'd like to do with that.
I haven't changed since how I felt last time. The attorney says it's not ideal. I agree, it's not ideal. He'd rather have it free and clear. I would too, when it comes to $98,000. I know when I take care of my household, I'm not going to pay a bill if I have a lien on, if there's a lien on something. I wouldn't do my household that way, and I wouldn't want the city to operate that way either. We probably won't want to sell the sewer plant, land, no, but it just, there's too many probablies, and it would be ideal. We could do this. We should, it might be okay. I'm not comfortable with it at all. I, I would like to, when we get ready to pay the 98-some thousand dollars, to have a free and clear deal. Everything's done, taken care of.
And that's what the whole harmless agreement, that's what that does. That, that gets you, that gets the city free and clear of anything that Smith &amp; Lovett may come back upon. We've used it on other projects. We've got it in place in Sycamore in a $20 million project up there. You know, it'd be, you know, if, if a contractor came in and damaged your washer when they were working on a water heater, didn't repair it, you had to pay to repair it. You would want them to pay for it if they did the damage, and we're in the same boat. I mean, it's not, it's not a huge dollar amount, it's 4,800 bucks. But we work with Smith &amp; Lovett all the time. We currently have them on like three other projects. And that kind of sets a precedence that, you know, they can do whatever they want to, and it's, you know, it's not the case. Most vendors step up, and, and nothing against Smith &amp; Lovett, they have two divisions. They have their new equipment division, which is, is top shelf, like, you know, I like dealing with them, and they have the, the retro division, which is where this comes into place. And they just have their, their, their set of rules and the replace warranty the part, but no labor. And so the contractors out money, or the city would have been, and we didn't feel that the city was, was, you know, should be responsible for it, for damage that Smith &amp; Lovett's equipment did. It was a fault, it was faulty motor. The impeller on the motor came off and did damage to the pump part bound below. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's not, it's essentially just, we don't want to set a precedence that pay them for something that they are responsible for.
I kind of feel like we, I personally wouldn't want the city set a precedent either to, to pay a bill that we don't have everything taken care of.
But that's what the whole harmless, that, that gives the city assurance, and that's why the, yeah, ideally free and clear, but, you know, this was 2018. Smith &amp; Lovett has to come back on the city at this point as well, so. And I think there's, I think there is actually a timeline from final payment that they, that they have like 30 days limit from final payment.
Yeah, after we accept the project, you pay the payment in 30 days, but that's no guarantee that we'll have that, all the lien waivers clear either in 30 days.
I'm, I'm not, I mean, Smith &amp; Lovett only has 30 days after final payment, I believe.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I don't know that.
I'm not either, so I don't pretend that I am, but.
Could you explain to me why can't we get the lien waiver? Why?
Because they're not accepting that deductive change order, $4,800 for, for, that, we pulled the pump. We paid Mississippi Valley to pull the pump and pull the pump base, and then put the other one back in together. We, we had already put the pump in play, or the new motor in place, started it up, and a few days, within a week later, it came apart and damaged. So we had to pull it again. Smith &amp; Lovett repaired it. It took them like two months to repair it. Put it back in, but we also had to pull the bottom part of the pump, and we're talking a pretty good sized pump, you know, the base is about that big around. And it's down in about a 20-foot hole in, at the pump station. So we have the partial waiver that we paid them, you know, the amount less that deductive change order, which is 4,800 and some change. That cost, we had the tickets from Mississippi Valley. We did not mark them up. We typically don't with our vendors and our subcontractors. They just cover the. They just cover the cost, that's all we're asking. So, they won't give you a final lien waiver because they feel that they're still owed the forty-eight hundred dollars because they didn't accept a deductive change order.
Yeah, they had to hire somebody else to come in and actually pull the pump to fix it. So, they actually paid somebody to do that work and they subtracted it from what they owed Smith and Lovett's.
And we gave them the opportunity to do it themselves and they wouldn't do it. So, you know, the city's sitting without a pump in a major pump station. And there were two, we replaced three motors in there. And I think the other two may have been in place or were put in place at that time. So, there was no backup. There's two with one backup, is how it's designed, I believe, by goodness, yeah. So, it was kind of an urgent situation and, you know...
So, they're just, they're still not taking responsibility for...
Correct.
...their mistake and don't think they should have to pay for it?
And I would, we would have some leniency on that if it was a warranty item.
Correct.
If it was running three months and something came apart and then we'd have to pull it. They would replace the part, we would replace the, you know, because it's still within our warranty. But it wasn't a warranty item. It was a factory failure before it was even accepted from the city or to the city, by the city and by the engineers. And that's reflected in the warranty start date of that particular one because those two, the two that were operational warranty date started at a certain date and that later one started two months later and was put back in place.
So, is the only way that they could come back on us to make us pay that four, forty-eight hundred dollars if we sold the property?
Not even that. It just basically, he just, the attorney basically said, when they do the, when they do the title search, you'll, they'll never get that. If there's a lien on the title, they won't release the title if we want, you know, when you buy your property.
Unless we, unless we paid that amount off somehow.
Yeah.
So, they put a lien on our, on us?
No, there's no lien. I mean, this was back in 2018. And, no, there's no, they haven't even addressed it with the city, as far as I'm concerned.
They just won't sign off on the lien waiver.
The final waiver. We have the partial waiver that we paid them a certain amount, you know. In our view, it's the total amount because they did have the change order, so... You know, you got, the contractor has to have a little bit of... Wait, you know, you can't have the subcontractors and vendors keeping us under a gun, you know, not taking responsibility for anything. They know that we have to get final waivers to close out a project. I mean, that's standard. There's nothing untypical about that.
I don't think the city's on the hook for anything. It's, it's, it's the dispute between the general and the sub for that amount of money. But like I said, it's...
And they, they actually took it to our bond company. And, you know, and they threw it out. You know, we gave them all the information and they said they have no... No, no precedence there to, to pull back that money.
Well, I think the work has been completed. And I think the city has a responsibility to pay its debt. And I would suggest that we withhold the four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars from this pay, from this final payment and let them, the contractor and the subcontractor, figure out what to do with it. I mean, the plan is an operation that's completed and ninety-three thousand, five twenty was withheld as the city's, you know...
But if you hold, if you hold, if you hold that money, that forty-eight hundred, I mean, it's, it's, it's a small amount, granted. But who wants to give forty-eight hundred dollars?
Forty, forty-eight seventy-four is what the dispute is over.
Right.
And I don't see any problem why we can't pay the rest.
But how do we resolve, other than us paying them and then you paying us? We're just out of pocket. So, I mean, if the city's not...
That, that's what we need to withhold.
Yeah, that's for you two to work out, that's...
For you guys to work out.
What about the lien waiver? Where does that stand?
Till they, till they work that out, we withhold the forty-eight seventy-four. I mean, the work is done. I mean, you know, if you take your vehicle in and get work done on it, you expect it to pay for it. So, the plan, the plan is completed.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what it takes at this meeting to get that portion of it resolved and, you know, that's all I can do, all I can do is explain what happened.
Unless you guys fight it out amongst yourselves, how are you going to do that? When that's completed, then we'll release the other forty-eight seventy-four.
Is there a reason the whole harmless agreement's not...
Well, obviously, you've got one council member here that doesn't want to do it. I'm just trying to be, little, do a little negotiating.
Yeah, and I appreciate it, yeah, I mean, granted.
Get you ninety or eighty-eight, you know, around eighty-eight thousand dollars, so don't argue too long.
I would just ask, have you, have you read the whole harmless agreement?
I've read everything that's been presented to me.
Okay, is there, is there a reason that doesn't...
I just want everything free and clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess to piggyback on that, it's just a note from attorney saying it would not prevent the filing of a lien. So, as people are responsible for the city, we want that final lien waiver, so...
I guess at that point, I'd have to have somebody else address it because I don't know the legalities of...
Is there something else we can do to help get that final lien waiver done? Because that's what we want.
If there is, I'll definitely let you know, so... My understanding is there's, they have a period of time after final payment. I think, I thought it was thirty days after final payment of the project to file that any lien. And it can't be on the property, I don't believe. I think it can only be on public funds, if I'm not mistaken, but I...
Are they going to be able to claim forever though, that they never received final payment without the forty-eight hundred dollars?
Well, I'm thinking so, but like I said, I'm just speculating because I don't know the particulars of it, so...
Maybe Danny can clarify that with the attorney.
Why should we pay for the attorney? I mean, it's their responsibility to get the lien waiver.
Our lien...
Well, I mean, we're not, obviously, you're not happy, so I can understand. You're not satisfied with that. We're not probably going to change that here. If we could do what is suggested, let us have that amount less that forty-eight hundred dollars and we can address it further after that. I can't resolve it at this point because that's all, that's all we have from them right now, so...
You have nothing from them saying we want this done except for pay us the forty-eight hundred dollars? They haven't addressed this at all with any other ways around this, other than just paying the full amount?
They may be able to, we might be able to negotiate with them, but, you know, I haven't gone that route because it shouldn't be a negotiation by the minute. It was, it was all their responsibility, so... I mean, we've got two years. We've worked with, you know, various projects with them. Thus, it hasn't impacted our relationship with them, so it's just, it's just business.
I'd say I agree with Hans. We should pay the amount that you've done the work for and we appreciate that. And I think we should pay that. And I also think we should hold the forty-eight hundred dollars until we get that final lien waiver. And I think that there should be some kind of way that we can help force that done, whether it's, you know, work on future projects isn't done until we get that final lien waiver or whatever we can do as a city to make sure we get that and get us free and clear.
I appreciate that and I appreciate, you know, listening. And if you can release that amount of funds, that's, you know, that's better than walking away empty handed, that's for sure. But we'll, we'll address it either, you know, if we have to give up the funds, I'd rather not pay Smith and Lovett's just because that sets a precedence with them. But that's more for my company and to determine, but...
Have we ever actually accepted the project yet?
No, we were going to do that, that was on the agenda to accept the project, so...
So, the warranties doesn't start till they accept?
No, substantial completion, so the warranties have been in place for a while.
Yeah, since August 2018.
Trying to get something.
Yeah, we'll just wait.
Come on now. Although it's running pretty smoothly out there.
That would give you more of an incentive to get your forty-eight hundred dollars.
Now, as soon as it started up, as soon as it fully started up, it, the warranty period started.
Like August 2018, the pump station actually started before that. So, we had a kind of a sequenced warranty start, so...
Well, I don't think the city should be held liable, so I'm going to make a motion that we pay eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents to Leander Construction. And you guys can, that's minus the forty-eight seventy-four. You guys can figure out a way to solve your differences. I don't like to be held hostage.
Well, yeah, neither do we. I can appreciate that, so...
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Yeah, a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion?
So, do we close the project then or not?
No, it won't, it won't be closed.
Won't be closed until that's taken care of, okay.
Roll call.
Okay, this is just to release retainage, but we're not going, we're not going to table accepting the project?
I don't see where that's on here, is it?
Yeah, all you got is releasing retainage.
Item one.
Resolution says...
Well, the resolution would be...
A decision, plant project. Project and release of retainage.
Well, scratch, does your motion scratch out the...
I'm just releasing retainage of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Yes, my question would be, can we release all the retainage minus that, that four thousand number and still accept the project?
Well, that's up to you.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, is anyone arguing not to accept the project, except for the, keeping the retainage?
No. No.
No, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion then to include accept the project.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, now we got a motion with support. Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Haytmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks for coming.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Item number one is to consider payment to French Rennecker Associates for engineering services related to the following projects. Houston Street Improvement in the amount of eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars. Wheeler Street and Ballard Pennington Curve Repair in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Haytmeyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two is to consider resolution authorizing a transfer of funds from local option sales tax to the airport capital fund and payment to Southeast Island Regional Airport.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
I just had one question. Do we have plans after these funds are sent towards the airport right now? Do we have money set aside going forward?
Just pretty much spins out everything we have. You know, when we start, when we do the budget again next year, putting money back.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Probably a good time to meet with the airport and see what they're planning and how they're anticipating it even.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Haytmeyer.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is to consider IT security awareness training for city employees. And I'll let Brad address that.
Yeah, I'd like to get this IT security training from Know Before. As you saw in my memo, they have some pretty popular hackers on there that show you the ropes on how basically they get in and fool you into clicking on emails and stuff like that. It's a great program. What it also does is it will do spot checks on them every so often. It'll send out a phishing email. And if they click on it, it'll have them do remedial training. I was going to keep that in Barracuda, but this Know Before had way better reviews and it was cheaper and doesn't just handle phishing. It also handles vishing, which is like voice attack, somebody calling in on your phone to Katie and Stacia and other different items like that in the security field. So, I would recommend getting this. I do have it in my budget. It would come out of software.
So, let me jump to item four real quick because you said this could be done with Barracuda?
Yeah, that's where the funds are coming from.
What, what part, what, how much more would Barracuda cost if this was included?
It was about a thousand dollars more than what Know Before wanted. And then that two thousand dollars is for three years. It's a, I don't have...
Thousand and thirty-one dollars.
Yeah, two thousand, yep.
Well, I agree with Brad because where I work, we have the Know Before.
You've been sent to school?
For people that are click happy on email, you're going to get nailed because it makes you look who the sender is and if it's really, really a true identity or not. And it makes you pay attention more to who you click because it does send you back through the remedial thing and it's saved a lot where I work for people.
And the other thing that it can do is I can drop USB sticks around. And if an employee plugs it into their machine, it'll let me know so I can train them on not plugging in unknown USB sticks into the computer because that's another vector that that stuff could come in.
Now, is this just for the employees or does it include council?
It's up to you guys whether you want to do it or not. I mean, if you want to be able to do it for home.
You can use, but you have them isolated from our, their work anyway.
Yeah, you guys aren't on our network, so you don't have to, but if you want to do it...
By all means, do it.
Okay.
Do I have to have another keychain for this? Brad, just a couple of questions. Is this, is this a one-time fee? Is this annual?
No, this is three years, I believe it was. It's in my memo, three years, every three years. And they constantly update the content to reflect what's going on out in the real world, so...
Do they have a weekly or monthly letter or something they send out to employees with new tactics that are being...
Yes, yep.
How about internally? Are you picking up on things you're seeing yourself and taking out to the employees and showing them, hey, this is something being sent around, don't click on that?
Well, our employees are actually pretty good for not being trained. Like, for instance, everybody just got something from the mayor asking for gift cards and everybody was smart enough not to go get gift cards for the mayor, but...
I got one today from the city administrator from Mount Pleasant.
Yep, and then like Leslie got one from Randy Frye before he retired, asking to change his direct deposit to a new account.
So, my gift card thing didn't work?
Yeah, just another note on that. Our, the, the magazine we get for the International City Managers Association had a whole issue on cybersecurity recently because of all the stuff that's going on, the public unrest and cities are a huge target right now, especially police departments. So, it's, this is pretty timely.
All motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Haytmeyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number four then is consider renewing Barracuda Central Security Service subscription in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
You know, I forgot to say one thing on the previous thing. Obviously, knowing some bit about these things, I just want to say going through your budget this year, I know we're spending some money tonight, but really our IT budget is not very much for a city of our size. Think you do a good job, so thank you very much.
I use a lot of open source stuff to try to keep the costs down.
Roll call.
Haytmeyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five is consider renewing software support for Beyond Trust Remote Support Solution in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents.
That's for my remote access so I can get in and fix like the police computers from home. It's actually on my sheet as Bombgar. They changed their name to Beyond Trust now. So, if you look for it, that's probably why you couldn't find it, but it is on there as Bombgar.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Brad, one thing, we talked on the phone about the Know Before because I thought, huh, you guys are going to have fun. Anyway, we spend a lot of money for different programs and for our IT department. And I'm trusting you because you know your stuff inside and out. But maybe if you could just give me a little synopsis of like what this program is for in particular and this program is for...
And I'll write something out so you know exactly what they're for.
That way I know specifically what, you know, because it seems to me sometimes it seems like redundant, but it's not.
Yeah, like the untangle is actually for our router that comes in. It... It, it inspects the traffic and stuff, and that's what that's for, because you had a question about Untangle. But I'll get you a list of what everything that I buy is that I have to renew.
What it's used for and stuff, that would help.
I think your budget presentation this year had a lot of that in that.
Yes.
Ask me if I remember from back. No, I don't.
Well, you think, you better tell him to make it in plain English.
Oh, he does. He makes it. He works on my computer. He knows what kind of English he's got to use for me. Like, Brad, do I really want to do this or not?
Okay, was there a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
And then would you guys prefer me just email you that list once I get it done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody interested?
I am.
From an email address we recognize, please.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Brad, that'll be helpful.
Thank you.
Don't, ask them to buy you some gift cards. Item number six is consider payment Jones Contracting for completed on the Gere Avenue Trail Project, an amount of forty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
So moved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
It looks great. I mean, they did an awesome job, and they were in and out without a whole lot of-
They had some rain issues, but they were good on my end to work with, too, traffic control and shutting lights off for them, and they were, they were really good to work with.
Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Height Meyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is consider resolution approving the final plat for lots twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-eight, in the eighth addition to Wildlife Lake Subdivision.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Citizens inquire, is anybody going to address the council, that are, as we did discuss or didn't discuss? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. We're going to do a work session.